My computer says 6:00 PM, so I will call the meeting to order. The regular meeting of the Temecula Planning Commission, December 1st, 2021. Can we have a flag salute Commissioner Turley Trejo? Will you please lead us in a flag salute tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So much easier than doing it on Zoom.
And can I say, I always love doing that.
Great. Could we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Vice Chair Turley Trejo.
Here.
Commissioner Hagel.
Here.
And Chair Watts.
Here.
And we have two excused absences from Adam Ruiz and Commissioner John Telesio.
Thank you Denise. Public comment, do we have any speakers tonight that wish to make any public comment? I don't see anybody. With that, I will go ahead and skip the paragraph on public comment then, since we don't see anyone out here. We don't have anything electronically, do we? Like email or anything like that? Just to make sure for the record? Okay, good. Consent calendar, all matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and all will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the planning commission request specific items be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And on the consent calendar tonight, we have the minutes from our November 17th meeting. So, any one care to make a?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hagel, seconded by Commissioner Turley Trejo. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And that's a three to zero vote. Public hearing. Any person may submit written comments to the planning commission before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the project at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the commission secretary at or prior to the public hearing. Any person dissatisfied with the decision of the planning commission may file an appeal of the commission's decision. Said appeal must be filed within 15 calendar days after service of written notice of the decision. The appeal must be filed on the appropriate community development department form and be accompanied by the appropriate filing fee. Public hearing item number two on tonight's agenda is long range planning application number LR 18-1684, an amendment to Title 17, zoning of the Temecula Municipal Code to revise the multifamily definition and to establish objective design standards that will apply to any housing development project or mixed-use housing project that pursuant to state law requires ministerial approval or where the housing development project is subject to discretionary review but a specific plan or PDO does not otherwise set forth objective design standards applicable to the project. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you Chair. Good evening Commissioners. Today I'll be presenting to you the objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use development. So the presentation is actually going to be set in kind of short three parts. I'll start kind of giving you an overview and then our consultant from Placeworks, Alan Loomis, he'll give you a more detailed presentation about our objective design standards and then it'll come back to staff and I will provide a SEQA determination as well as staff's So the development of the objective design standards has been a year-long process and this truly has been a team effort. We have been working closely with our consultant as well as internal departments such as public works, fire, building and safety to ensure we have specific standards that are incorporated into these standards. Initially, we had identified 12 potential architectural styles and we selected six based on our project's scope. That also is versatile within our and matches our current city architecture. And we had met with our planning commission and city council subcommittees and they had supported staff's six recommendations. And so from that, we selected, as you can see here on the screen, the Mission Spanish Colonial, the Craftsman, the Tuscan, American Rule, East Coast Traditional and Italianate. A lot of the styles you can see throughout our city. And then again, from our subcommittee's support, we developed clear setup of objective architectural and site design requirements. So staff has developed these objective design standards, again, to address state enacted laws that basically streamline housing production and especially affordable housing that require ministerial approval, no SEQA, no public hearing, and the city may only apply objective design standards. We just wanted to make sure that we have quality products as we have done previously and as you can see, from our beautiful architecture throughout our city. So subjective versus objective, subjective is more opinion, using words such as "may", "should", "recommend", they're more guidelines. You know, for example, like the development should fit the character of the community. That can be interpreted in many different ways. Where objective is measurable, we can use words like "will", "shall", "must". Like as an example here, is the building over three stories shall have a base treatment at the ground floor distinct from the remainder of the facade. So these objective design standards will apply citywide for multifamily and we're defining that as two or more units, which is consistent with state law, and mixed-use development that has a residential component. And then I will turn it over to Alan Loomis from Placeworks and he's just going to take a second to get his presentation going.
There we go. Well, thank you Sarah and city staff for getting us to this point. It's a pleasure to be here in front of the planning commission. We've had many, many online meetings. It's the first time I've had an in-person meeting in Temecula, so it's very exciting to be here, to share this project at this milestone. I will say to reiterate what Sarah had said, this has been a great process. It's been, your staff has been fantastic and has been very hands-on on this. I think every one of the planners has gone through the document you have in hand twice with many red line comments to pick up and kind of correct. So I want to commend the city staff for really taking ownership of this process and the end product, which in the end, they're going to be the ones to implement. So it's great that they've really owned this and provided us a lot of good feedback. So much of what you're going to see is the result of that iterative process with staff. So to start with, as Sarah said, we initially looked at 12 architectural styles that are here on the screen. And this was a distillation of about 20 architectural styles that the staff had pulled together in a list and we had provided some detailed, like one-page cut sheets illustrating these styles and talked with staff about them. And as Sarah indicated, we kind of ultimately decided to move forward with six that we would try and define for the design standards. And without belaboring it too much, just do want to sort of point out kind of why some of these fell out. So for example, number eight, the neoclassical regency style. You know, this is the kind of style you might see on like Fifth Avenue in New York. It's a very urban kind of architecture and general feeling was too urban for the context where these standards would apply in Temecula. Number nine, the prairie architecture style, kind of influenced by Frank Lloyd Wright. Everyone was initially really intrigued by, but there's not a lot of great California precedence for this style at multifamily housing densities that the standards would apply to. It's generally very large mansion homes. So we kind of took that as a cue of nobody, we can't find any good precedents, then this is probably not a good style to use. Number five, the modern contemporary style, we had some interesting conversations about whether we should define that or include it. And the end result was like, that's something that's really permitted and in some ways encouraged in the Uptown specific plan, let it live there or not in the other parts of the city where the standards would apply. And a similar conversation unfolded regarding number 11, the Western Victorian style, because you know, our initial result in Placeworks was, we've got this very defined kind of Western architecture theme in the community, let's run with it. And in the end, we said, keep that in Old Town, don't dilute the sort of aesthetic impact of Old Town as the sort of Western themed part of the town. Don't let little bits of Western stuff sort of scatter around the town and then Old Town is no longer unique. So at the end, we, in conversation with staff, arrived at the six styles that Sarah had indicated before. And worked this through with staff and then vetted it with the subcommittees who were supportive of this. So Mission, number one, Mission Spanish Colonial, Craftsman, number two, and Tuscan, number three are pretty well-known architectural styles in Southern California and in this region in particular. Number four, the American Rule style, this really takes its inspiration from kind of like the agricultural forms and kind of barns, is sort of taking inspiration from the wine country and the outskirts of the city. The East Coast Traditional, number five. This is, on the East Coast, this has a number of kind of different subcategories of sort of like neo-colonial, et cetera, Georgian. Here on the West Coast, we sort of felt like all that kind of gets lumped together in a kind of interesting way and just calling it East Coast Traditional is a broad sort of East Coast-inspired architecture made sense. There's also precedence for that here in Temecula. So it felt like there's obviously a market and an interest in this kind of architecture. And then one, I think for us at Placeworks was surprising, was the Italianate style, number six, which is really kind of pulling inspiration to locally, probably most people will be familiar with the Gaslamp District in San Diego is kind of an example where you find a lot of this architectural style. Although outside of an urban context like downtown San Diego, it's a little bit more relaxed than you would see in that particular image. So those were the six architectural styles that staff charged us to develop standards for, in addition to some general building and development standards. And so that work over the course of the past year has led to the document you have in your packet and sort of begins with the page you see, cover page you see here on the screen. We divided the standards into a series of chapters, you can see in the table of contents. Chapter one is a real simple like user's guide, how do you navigate this document? How do you apply it both as an applicant or an architect developer, but also from a city staff perspective? And I will say, there are two different versions of this document in circulation. There's a print version, which is what you have in your hand. But for city staff, we also created an interactive PDF version that has literal checkboxes next to all the standards and hot links to go back and forth between the chapters, definitions, et cetera. So for example, in the interactive PDF version, you could click on the blue text and that will take you immediately to that chapter, much like you would with a website. And so staff is very interested in having something that they could use in a computer format. They don't have to have all this printed material in front of them, they could check things off. And so the checklist version, I think is going to be pretty useful and I think for city staff to be able to work through this. Chapter two, site design standards, this covers a lot of material that is already covered in existing design guidelines and the specific plans, particularly related to parking requirements, you know, how many stalls are you allowed to build, parking stalls before you have to do a planted landscape, Finger Island, and how many trees. Deals with issues like mailboxes and utilities, a lot of pragmatic stuff. A lot of that material is pulled from existing standards and specific plans and guidelines. In many cases, we're changing the "should" language from your guidelines into "shall" statements and some cases having to slightly rework that language to make that work as a "shall" statement as opposed to "should". The general building design standards in chapter three covers really the issues of form and massing, kind of placement of garage doors is kind of a major topic in that area in that chapter. And so chapter two and three would apply to any building type or any building form the standards would address. But then as we move into chapter four through nine, we begin to have standards for these specific architectural styles. And so at this point now, a developer or an architect has some choice as to which set of standards they're going to employ. So they could walk in the door and say, we're going to do a Craftsman project. Well, now only chapter five applies to them. Or we're going to do a mix of Tuscan and Spanish Revival. You've got an example of that here in town, so now chapters four and six apply to you. So not all these chapters necessarily apply to every single project. It'll be somewhat to the discretion of the applicant, their architect, as to which one of these styles they elect to work with. For the standards to be employed, they have to pick one of these six styles. They don't get to kind of go off reservation and pick their own thing. If they decide they want to bring in Frank Gehry, for example, to design their housing project, then congratulations, they now get to go through your discretionary review process. They don't get this kind of ministerial pathway. You know, or staff would politely tell them, I know Frank Gehry's not appropriate, you need to do a Craftsman project. And then finally, we include definitions so that all the terms we're using are defined, often illustrated. And in the interactive version, if you see a term in the document that's got a definition, it'll actually kind of, you can hover over that term and the definition will pop up. So that will help in this sort of standard statement that anytime we're using an architectural term, we have the definition of the standard immediately, the definition of that term immediately available. So there shouldn't be a lot of discretion or kind of argumentation between staff and applicants as to what's meant by certain terms. So without necessarily going through the entire document, I do want to share with you what we shared with some of the subcommittees, which is just to go through the Spanish Colonial Mission Revival style, just to show you how these sort of styles, architectural styles are defined in terms of standards. One of the challenges, of course, with defining architectural styles as standards as opposed to guidelines is that, any good architect knows, you really employ a lot of different things. There's a lot of artistry involved in kind of delivering a particular style and trying to make it as a precise checklist is, you know, not necessarily going to result in quality architecture. It'll result in potentially something that meets all the checklist but is a completely awful building. So that was one of the challenges we had trying to define these as styles into standards. So we begin each one with this kind of hero image of kind of an evocative, kind of clear image of what the style is, a sort of description of where the style emerges historically, which is important in some cases because particularly Mission Spanish Colonial and some of these other styles, they have a lot of mutations over time historically and people will use these terms to describe things that maybe are not Mission Colonial Revival. But they might be that in a different community or in a different product line, but not here. So having a definition of what the styles are, I think, is a helpful sort of starting point. For each of the styles, we then work our way through a number of topics. So we start with form and massing. And you can see we have a number of required elements. This document is lushly illustrated. And then we'll go on to roof designs and the kind of materials provided are required for roofs. So in this case, the roof's pitch is often dictated, like what's the minimum or maximum roof pitch is appropriate to the style, kind of the materials those roofs need to be built into. And one thing that's useful in this particular example to highlight here is this optional elements choose at least two. So often what we've done in these, in each of the styles is, we said there are certain things an architect is required to do to meet the style standards, but then there are some other things, in this case a list of four, and the architect gets to choose at least two of those to include in their project. So there's some discretion at this point in terms of how the architect's going to design their building. We thought this would be a useful way of ensuring that we don't end up with like super cookie cutter buildings that even on two, maybe call it a development where there's two buildings that are both in a Spanish Colonial Revival, there might be some subtle differences depending on how an architect applies these optional elements. One would hope at any rate they wouldn't sort of cookie cutter the same plan over and over, that they would sort of have some variation even within a single project development. So we also detail walls and window designs. And so this one, in this case, the optional element says you have to choose at least one of these two and it has to be for at least 65% of the total windows. So depending on the style, depending on the topic, we're looking at the number of required elements or the kind of makeup of the optional elements sort of varies a little bit. So these are all kind of thoughtfully done relative to the different architectural styles. We cover material and colors. Spanish Revival architecture tends to be white or off-white, not a lot of variation there. So that one's, there's just one required element here and also with the window frames and the color of those. Other styles have more options available to them on materials and colors. And then finally, on the styles, we also provide this decorative accent and details. So in this case, we have a number of things. These are the, you know, the pieces that you would add on to a building to give it some character. And so here we have a list of 12 and we're telling applicants to have to pick at least six of these to meet the standards. This is an example of where the input from the subcommittee was, subcommittees was very helpful. Initially, we had written four. And here in the subcommittee, both the planning commission and the city council said, up those numbers. So we said, okay, we'll make all of these, at least half of the list here has to be included. So again, there's some discretion and artistic choice that can be employed by the architects, but still with the checklist format, this remains a sort of standards guide that city staff and architects literally can check off. Have you met six of these? Congratulations, you can move forward. If you only have five, back to the drawing board. For each of the styles, we've also defined mixed-use elements. And we have a larger chapter in the general building design standards regarding mixed-use development that's largely drawn from your existing specific plans. But then we kind of go into some detail about how mixed-use is applied to these styles. So it's a similar setup. This is, discussion on mixed-use is important because under SB 35, which is the law we're responding to here, a development, a mixed-use project that includes the affordable component suddenly is eligible for these ministerial pathways. And so that could include a kind of the mixed-use, traditional mixed-use project, that's a vertical mixed-use project with commercial on the ground floor, housing above. But it could also include a development that shows up that has a commercial outpad at the corner of the arterials and behind that is some form of freestanding or kind of a housing development that's not mixed-use. But if it's submitted as a single application on a single lot, then it could be considered for this ministerial review. So thinking through the mixed-use components was something that we knew we had to address. I will say, because your existing specific plans cover the kind of traditional urban areas of Old Town and Uptown, when we mapped out the areas where these standards most likely would be applied, it's largely on some of your arterial corridors. So this option of a mixed-use project that has a commercial pad at a corner and then the housing behind is a pretty likely scenario. And then finally, for all the standards, we included some specific definitions and standards related to duplex or triplex kind of development. This is largely in response to current state legislation, knowing that there are single-family lots that potentially could be subdivided into kind of triplex style developments. So we've provided standards for this scale of development as well. These are largely repetitive, there's some minor variation to the different styles. But you know, we're trying to ensure that if somebody does show up with this kind of project and they're pulling the SB 35 card to get the ministerial approval, that there is some baseline set of standards. So the issue of like, it's the second bullet down, all units show up private open space measuring at least eight by six feet. And that opens, how that open space may be provided, I just think is important. So you don't end up with a three-unit development that has literally no open space to the residents. On a larger development where there's common open space and recreation centers and pools, et cetera, that may not be as significant an issue, but in our estimation, if you're going to have only three units on a lot, at least, you know, they all ought to have some nominal, minimal private outdoor space associated with those units. So this is something we added into kind of at the tail end of the process, as I said, in response to recent state legislation. So that's an overview of how we've constructed the styles. Like I said, if we're to go through each one of them, you'd find them to be pretty repetitive and their structure with variations based on the particulars of the sort of architectural characteristics of each of those styles. But that's a very short overview of the document, of course, be happy to answer questions. And with that, I'll turn it back to Sarah.
Perfect, thank you Alan. I'm just going to wait two seconds, there we go. So the SEQA determination is, the proposed ordinance has been deemed to be exempt from further environmental review as there is no possibility that the proposed ordinance could have a significant impact on the environment pursuant to SEQA guidelines. And staff's recommendation that the planning commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council adopt, one, a resolution adopting the objective design standards for multifamily and mixed-use developments. And two, an ordinance of the city council, the city of Temecula amending Title 17, which is zoning of our Temecula Municipal Code to revise the multifamily definition and require that multifamily and mixed-use developments comply with objective design standards and make the finding that the ordinance is exempt from SEQA. And with that, that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you Sarah. And thank you Alan. Very well done. Questions of staff? Linay.
Okay, so I'm not sure this is, some is probably from the consultant and some for staff, but so, and I was on the subcommittee, so yeah, I remember all of this. But my first question is, so is this similar as far as no public hearings like the Ranch of Highlands? Is this also going to be no public hearings for any of this?
Yes, that is correct. If a project does come in and it's pursuant to like, for example, let's say SB 35 and has an affordable component, we don't have any way of making them go through a public hearing. It has to go with ministerial. However, with these objective design, we'll have standards that we can, that we can apply to their development.
Yeah, I understand that. So if it does have an affordable part to it, then there are no public hearings?
If it meets certain requirements. So it's not just, you know, 5% affordable potentially, depends on what the, there's different standards under state law, but if it meets the minimum thresholds depending on the type of project that's being brought forth. And assuming it doesn't fall under some of the exemptions, because there's also exemptions under state law that, you know, if you're in certain areas, you can't use a streamlined process. So if you're like, for example, in a high fire severity zone, you might not be allowed to go under a streamlined process. So if you do qualify under, say SB 35, then yes, under state law, the city cannot have a public hearing component for a project approval.
This is so crazy. Okay, that's what I thought. Okay, and then there was something that you said, consultant, about mixing a couple of styles. So you're saying that there, you can actually do two styles together in something?
That's correct. If you had a development that involved more than one building.
Oh, okay.
Then you could come in and one building could be Craftsman or one building could be Spanish. No. Yeah.
I think like, okay, so we're going to have a little Craftsman going on with our, you know, like, okay, all right, good.
We're not promoting Frankenstein buildings.
Okay, this is good.
If I may, I want to, saw this just prior, we did have a requirement that if it was, I believe it was over 10 buildings in a particular development, there was a requirement that they mix, they do have more than one architectural style. So you don't end up with a 30 unit project that's all one.
That's fine. I just had this idea of the one building having a mix of, and I'm like, oh, okay. Okay, and then the definitions chapter I thought was really helpful, that that was really, you don't see that, you know, I thought that was really good. Okay, then the last thing is, so, okay, so we're not talking about Uptown with all of this, we're talking, so I just kind of want an example of what, where we're talking about in the city that something like this would be built.
I think a good example would be the Target Shopping Center. Because under our community commercial zone, you can do multifamily and they can take maybe like a spot of that and somebody wants to develop that into a multifamily and currently in our code. We don't really have any standards or anything architecturally, what we consider beautiful that we can apply if somebody's going through, if a developer is going through a streamlining process. That would be one, a good example.
So you're saying that now we would have that?
Yeah, now we would have this and then we would have to apply it.
So this is more kind of in urban areas that we're talking about, a mix?
Yeah, more, yeah, more community commercial, more professional office, not necessarily within our Old Town, Uptown, not track home, no.
Not like a tract home, okay. Okay. And I get that we're doing these standards, which makes a lot of sense when we don't have choice in other areas, right?
Right. We did include, as Alan had mentioned, the duplexes in response to the SB 9, just in case if there was a project that came in, that we already have standards within this document that we can apply. So we kind of took that into consideration too.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, one of the, if you don't, if you did not have standards of this nature and if an applicant came in and they did meet the thresholds for being an eligible project, the city staff would be obligated to approve it.
Right.
Regardless of how awful it was. So now with these standards, there is something you can measure them against and send them back to the drawing board.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
So that's obviously with the main reason, one of the main reasons cities are undertaking these kinds of efforts.
And just to clarify one more thing, so the language is broad enough that it could also potentially apply for projects where there could be potentially a public hearing but a city can't deny. hearing, but a city can't deny a housing development project on the basis of subjective standards. But we can deny it if it doesn't meet our objective standards. And so this could be another scenario where we could apply these objective standards and say, well, the project isn't meeting those minimum thresholds. Now, obviously, by the time a project comes to the planning commission, the applicants have worked with staff, they know, you know, what's expected of them, and we've already fleshed that all out before it hits, you know, the commission level. But that's part of the discussion that we would be having with the applicants of, these are the standards that have to be met.
Repeat the first part. You were saying, so if they had, so we could require a public hearing for the objective standards, but not the other way around?
No, no, no. So we can, if it's an SB 35 project, we cannot require a public hearing. But there are other projects that are, like, let's say it's just a market rate project, but for some reason it's not in one of our specific plan areas, or it's not in, you know, there's not other standards already within our code that would apply to that project. We would be able to apply these standards to require the applicant to, you know, comply with what our vision is for the city.
Okay.
Okay.
So then if someone came in with a project, let's say with an architectural standard of one of the other six that wasn't in here, they would be required to go through the entire process?
That's been my understanding of the process, but for the city attorney.
So the base, so the city cannot deny a housing development project if it, if the project meets our objective standards. If it doesn't meet our objective standards, that potentially could be a basis for the denial of a project. And so we'd have to obviously look at it on a case-by-case basis, but that could be a reason to say, oh, potentially you're falling outside of the, this isn't, this would not apply for an SB 35 project. SB 35 project, you cannot compel a public hearing.
Or specific plans or whatever.
Right, but another type of project potentially could, you know, we'd say it didn't meet our process, so you've got to go through a public hearing process.
So those architectural standards are objective, then? That's what basically we're saying. So that, this is not something objective, not something we make up as we go along. This is upfront, here's what you got to do. If you don't want to do that, then you need to, you'll probably be required to go through the process.
Right, because it's, it's the way the state has essentially dictated to get away from what was our CUP process, right? Where we look at, is it compatible with the neighborhood? Is it, you know, have the same feel and character of the surrounding neighborhood? Those are all subjective standards that we can't look at to deny a housing development project. But we can say, but it doesn't have the six windows that it needs to have, or it doesn't have this type of architectural element. That's in our design guidelines. You haven't met that threshold. We won't approve the project unless you revise it to match our guidelines.
So the, the purpose of this, from the state's point of view, is to create methods that someone could build and, and shorten the process and, and get houses built faster?
Absolutely, to streamline the process. So every, you know, it's out front, what the city wants to see built here, and it makes it easier and less expensive, I think, too, because you're not having all the back and forth with the architects and, and the whole, you know, team. It's, they've got the guidelines, they know what they're getting into, and then it'll help on both sides.
Right, and reduce costs.
Absolutely.
Last question is, I was a little surprised by the Italianate architectural. Is there any place within the city that we have that style being used today?
I don't think so, to my recollection.
No, I went out on a tour at the early start of the process and did a lot of photography of existing projects, and I didn't see any developments that really matched the way it was Italianate standards as we drafted them. So it would be something new.
I'm just kind of curious with a limitation of six, whether that would be something that would be in, in demand. If we, if we haven't seen it go up yet, is it because there probably is no demand for it, or is it something maybe just catching on? Like the, you know, I know farmhouse is a big deal everywhere in Southern California today, and there's a very high demand for properties built with, with a farmhouse, you know, or modern farmhouse style.
Yeah, no, that, I mean, that's an excellent question. I think when we were trying to select the six, we picked the three main and everyone pretty much agreed to them. And then with the remainder three, we kind of wanted to have a little bit of fun, I guess, and just have maybe a little more variation. And I think Italianate was kind of the only one that was, it could be a part of our city architecture. It just has to be in a unique spot.
Yeah. So five years from now, if there is no one that wants to build that style, could we replace that style with another style?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't see why not.
Okay. Because, you know, six is somewhat limiting for, you know, for a developer. So you want to make sure that, you know, that as many of that six is right in the ballpark of what they want to do and what people will buy, so, okay.
Yeah, and one of the other reasons for the Italianate is we needed to have an opportunity for a style that worked well with mixed use, and that's why the Italianate was added. So the other styles, they can work with mixed use, but from our understanding and discussion with their consultant, looking at different styles, Italianate offers the ability to do commercial on the first floor and then residential above. So that's really why that six thousand, offer that developer flexibility.
And then I would assume that the duplex and triplex, what you showed before for, for mission, also there is, that applies to all the other five? There is standards for the other five for that?
Yes.
Right? Okay, good. That's it.
One more thing, to answer your question about revising the guidelines, the reason that they're going to be, we're recommending they be adopted by resolution is so that they're more easily amended. So it, you know, you don't have to go through the ordinance process. And the resolution is recommending that it, the planning commission can make further revisions. It doesn't have to go back to council after the initial, you know, first review.
Beautiful. Quick question. A project comes in under these conditions and they propose something outside of the objective standards that we've adopted, is that ministerial rejection available at that point? Or if they don't comply with the objective standards, they'll still come in, say they comply with 80% and then they decide to throw in 20%, can that be ministerially disapproved because of not complying with the objective standards?
So if it's a ministerial, so there's certain projects that are going to be ministerially approved, never come to planning commission. Those projects, if they don't meet the objective guidelines, could be disapproved on that, on the basis that they don't meet our objective.
Yes.
Standards, so yes.
Yes, okay, perfect. All right, any other questions of staff before I open the public hearing?
There always has to be a color question. So going to Craftsman style, I notice this is use of dark, neutral, or earth tone colors like browns and greens. So Craftsman is kind of the beachy style to me. So I'm thinking you ought to add blue in there.
We can certainly add more colors.
As an option, just saying, because it's kind of got that beachy feel, the Craftsman does.
Having worked in Santa Monica, I would say yes, many of the Craftsman homes there are the blues and grays and whites.
So I think it might, might be good.
Inland, they tend to be more neutral, brown colored. Yeah, Pasadena generally no, but it's obviously the discretion of the planning commission if you want to add those.
And a certain color of blue, but yeah, so anyway, just thought I'd throw that out there.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
All right.
With that, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
We have none.
With that, I'll close the public hearing. And if we have any more discussion or a motion?
I will move the item, PC resolution number 2021? No, is that right?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
Dash forty.
Dash forty.
Fine.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Hegel. And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that's a three to zero vote, Denise. Thank you very much, Alan. That's great work. I, I appreciate the comments to staff. You know, we, we're spoiled with the staff we have, and we appreciate everything they do, but they have done a good job and you have done a great job. I think you've given us some, a product that's outstanding. And I would expect them to get calls from other cities since everybody's going to have to go through this type of thing. I think you've set a really good template out there for, for folks. I mean, it's very clear, you either do it or you don't. I mean, it's pretty simple. So I, I want to compliment everyone on that.
Thank you.
Okay, next item, number three. Long-range planning project number LR 20-1223. A resolution of the planning commission of the City of Temecula recommending that the city council adopt an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, Amending Titles 15 and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code to, one, comply with state law changes to large family daycare homes; two, clarify the standards that apply to senior housing, transitional housing, supportive housing, emergency shelters, trash enclosures, self-storage, or mini warehouse facilities; and, two, projects using the affordable housing overlay zone; and, three, establish standards and requirements for dedications and improvements for developments without a subdivision; and, four, update how development impact fees can be used; and, five, clarify where artificial turf can be installed; and, six, make minor typographical edits in finding that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, otherwise known as CEQA pursuant to CEQA Guidelines Section 15061, parentheses B, parentheses 3." Wow, that is like a real run-on sentence, but anyhow, that's done. Staff report, Brandon.
Thanks for doing the hard work and reading that. So tonight, I'm presenting the item previously mentioned. So let me give you a little bit of background. We do municipal, municipal code updates from time to time. It's our maintenance, our municipal code, it's a living document, and so that's what we're here to do tonight. The proposed amendments touch Title 15 and Title 17, the Building and Construction Code and the Zoning Code. Under state law, the planning commission is required to review and make recommendations on Title 17 before it goes to the city council. So what are some of those proposed changes tonight? Well, we're removing outdated secondary dwelling unit language and replacing it with ADU language. We're further clarifying the definition of ADUs. We've been working with ADUs the last year, really, and we've got some minor tweaks in there that we want to enhance that section of the code. State laws changed regarding family daycares, and we're going to consolidate family daycares under the proposed ordinance to comply with state law. And we're proposing to update the land use matrix to allow for traditional, transitional and supportive housing in residential zones. This is required by state law and the city's housing element. Additional proposed changes include updating ground-mounted solar collector setbacks. We just want to make it consistent with the building and fire code, so someone's not getting one answer from the planning department and then another answer from the building and safety department. Clarifying roof deck standards, again, there's no issues here, we're just clarifying it, making it more clear for applicants. Providing development standard consistency for senior housing slash concierge care in the public institutional zoning districts. Clarifying floor area ratio and lot coverage requirements for self-storage and mini warehouse. We had a developer ask us a question about something, said, you know, one's ever asked us this way. So it's a clarification, no major changes there. This is a larger one, updating regulations to provide for robust emergency shelter standards. We currently do not have standards for emergency shelters, so this would be something to comply with state law and obviously create robust standards. Updating trash enclosure standards to incorporate best practices for anti-dumping and anti-tresspass measures. And clarifying the standards for the affordable housing overlay in the public institutional zoning areas. Additional changes include reaffirming that artificial turf is not a landscape material. And with that, also allowing sports and recreational facilities to use artificial turf. And single-family residences would have an exemption as well under the proposed changes to continue to use artificial turf. And for Title 15, I'm going to turn it over to Ron Marino to answer a little bit more about that.
So what we are proposing is to change the municipal code with regards to dedications and improvements when it comes to projects that do not have a subdivision attached to it. And this really stems from the fact that we've had quite a few businesses in Old Town that have come in to do TIs but not really implemented the full Old Town specific plan, you know, and do curb, gutter, sidewalk. And that's because typically those improvements would be required during a subdivision. So what we wanted to do was change that to have it be any land use entitlement. There are certain exemptions, of course. So after all the changes are said and done, there's going to be a few exemptions so that if someone were actually expanding their home by no more than 25%, then they would be exempt, they would not be required to do any dedications. We would foresee that in more of the rural areas, areas that don't have full improvements that have been dedicated and improved. And then number two would be the construction of said ADUs, as Brandon pointed out. So someone doing an ADU would not be required to do those in frontage improvements as well. And then la, up to 1,200 square feet, I should add. And then the development of any non-habitable structure. So this code change is merely to be able to get the frontage improvements we need when the project is avoiding the subdivision map act and avoiding a subdivision for whatever reason. They don't need it, or they're actually trying to do something else. And then lastly, there is a deferral as well. We do allow that. So there could be a deferral of those improvements at the discretion of the city engineer to be done at a later time. So that's the, just of the code change for subdivision improvements. Thank you, Brandon.
Thank you, Brandon. Thank you, Ron. Questions of staff?
I've got two more slides, almost there, almost there. The proposed project is exempt from CEQA under Section 15061B3. And with that, staff is recommending that the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the proposed ordinance. And staff's available for questions.
My apologies, sir. All right, do we have any questions of staff?
So looking through this, so the large family daycare home facility is crossed out, meaning?
Yes, so what you'll see is large family daycare is crossed out, but then it's added where the small family daycare is. You'll see an addition of text. So essentially, prior to state law changes, we used to have a definition for small family daycare and a definition for large family daycare. Small family daycare could come in, get a business license, and then open their facility. Under state law now, the large family daycares, which we used to require conditional use permit for, can come in just like a small family daycare. They don't need any permit from the city except for the fire marshal's office, of course, and they, and they may open their business that way. So the state law requires that.
Wow. Hmm. We're having lots of fun here, aren't we? Okay. And then over here on accessory structures, roof deck must meet district standards, that's crossed out?
Yes, you'll see we moved it from the bottom section of the table and moved it up. So you'll see that it used to be on the last page there.
Oh, okay.
So we moved it up and then just added clarifying information on there. The goal is, again, you want any customer, a citizen looking in our municipal code, you want them to see all the roof stands or, or deck standards, like, one after another, so they're not jumping between places or getting misinformation. So this is clarifying it, just further defining it and make sure everybody's on the same page.
Okay.
And make sure we're in compliance with state law.
That, too.
And I'm glad to see all the marijuana stuff doesn't have anything.
There are no candidates, changes proposed.
That makes me very happy. Okay, that's all I have.
Artificial turf.
Oh, yeah.
There are HOAs that will not allow artificial turf on front lawns. To, from what I'm reading here, that would not, that this would negate HOA from having that rule. Is that correct?
No, an HOA could have standards above and beyond our standards. We're not negating the HOA standards whatsoever.
Okay. Okay. The other question, emergency shelters for a property to be used for an emergency shelter, they would have to be pre-designed and pre-approved beforehand? Is that correct? So that you don't have a situation where we have, say, an earthquake, we need a bunch of emergency shelters, we, somebody designates one, and there is no time to do the inspections, making sure that, you know, all, they, they meet, you know, code. So I'm assuming that that, for a property to be used for emergency shelter, they have to be so-called pre-approved?
They would be required to comply with their zoning first, and they would also be required to comply with these supplemental standards, which we do not have. So if someone came in with an emergency shelter today, they do not have any additional standards. So this is kind of a proactive approach if someone were coming with their emergency shelter. In addition to that, they would still have to go through a building and fire department process where they would do what's called an occupancy. where they would do what's called an occupancy inspection. They'd come in, make sure the facility had adequate electrical plumbing, mechanical, structurally sound, all those different things.
Is there situations in this city where emergency shelters would be designated that are not on... Not city property? And not school property?
There could be situations where it's not on public property or school property. That is correct.
So if they were, hopefully, they will know to basically create a shelter beforehand and go through all the approval processes before something happens?
Yes, we educate applicants on a daily basis to go through the occupancy process, obtain a business license, and come through with your zoning and planning approvals.
Okay, thank you.
All righty, with that... You already had your turn.
I know I did. Can we go back to the slide with the artificial turf? I remembered that when Bob was talking about it. Okay, so... Okay, so not for commercial areas, but single-family residences may use artificial turf? Is that new?
Single-family residences have been allowed to use artificial turf. We're just basically confirming that to not provide any confusion with this. What this is to prevent is from a developer to come in and say, "My entire, you know, 26,000-square-foot industrial building is going to have artificial turf for landscape material." That's at the point of this is. We've had some more recent instances where developers are saying, "No, we're just going to do the artificial turf for all of the landscape." And we're like, "That's not landscaping," so.
So do we have a lot of artificial turf in single-family homes in the... I feel like we don't.
Honestly, some of the artificial turf is so good. People put leaves on it. You can't really tell the difference anymore. And so I think in some instances, we just don't notice it as much. It's not blue, which is helpful as well. But yeah, there is some in our community. I wouldn't say it's all over the place, but there is some artificial turf.
You know, that's a good point, Brandon. Does it restrict the color to green?
It does not restrict the color to green.
Really?
Some Boise State fan may decide to...
Yeah, I've actually seen blue, you know, a...
Might want to consider that for a next round.
Greenish-blue, I guess you could say.
We'd be happy to add that. If the Planning Commission desires, we'd be happy to add that.
That'd probably be a good idea.
I think that's a good idea, yeah.
All right, well...
Yeah, my neighborhood has quite a bit of artificial turf now, and some of it is kind of hard to tell, but a lot of it is, you know, a little older and very easy to tell. Particularly, I don't know too many people to cut their... Have cut their grass perfectly every time. But there's more and more being put in all the time in our neighborhood, anyway.
You're right, and there's a lot of different quality. You're right. There's some that's just excellent. You can't even tell. And there's others, you can see the seams like crazy, so... Okay. You're good? You're good? Everybody's good? I will open the public hearing. Do we have any public speakers?
We have none.
We don't have anything electronically either?
No.
Okay, good. I will close the public hearing. And discussion or a motion?
So I'll make a motion, but I think we should add that, the green, to the artificial turf and...
I can read that right now. So then the motion is to approve the ordinance or to recommend that the City Council adopt the ordinance as drafted with the revision that in Section 17 of the ordinance, the language will be revised to state, "Artificial synthetic turf is not a permitted plant material in commercial, industrial, or mixed-use zones and/or multifamily projects. Green artificial turf may be permitted in commercial, industrial, and/or mixed-use zones or multifamily projects when utilized for bona fide recreational facilities such as a sports field. Green artificial synthetic turf is a permitted non-plant material for single-family homes when used in place of a lawn or other landscaped area of the home."
But not encouraged? Can we add that? Do we need to say a specific color of green? Now I'm worried. Okay, yeah.
Okay, so that's your motion?
That's my motion.
Does that motion meet the legal standard there? All right.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Hagel. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that's a three to zero vote. Thank you very much, staff. Brandon, great job, as usual.
Thank you.
And that should bring us to the end of tonight's agenda. So commissioner reports. I'll switch up, and I'll start over here on my left with Commissioner Hagel, if you have anything to say.
I have nothing.
Well, I was just going to say that we were supposed to have our QLMP meeting, but it was canceled because of COVID stuff. So I don't know when we're meeting next. We decided January?
Our next scheduled meeting is in January. We're not going to try to fit one in in December. So we'll just... We'll add a meeting at the end of the process.
Okay.
So we're not going to be meeting in two weeks?
No, we are.
We are? Okay, I'm sorry. Sorry, I was doing my chair duties there and not paying attention. It happens. It happens. I just, quick thing, quick comment. I was driving around yesterday doing things, and we take a bad rap sometimes for our traffic in Temecula, but I can tell you from experience yesterday, Lake Elsinore and Menifee have just horrible traffic as well, so... Yes, inside the city, it takes a long time. Longer than getting around to Temecula, I must say.
Is there any place in Southern California that doesn't have horrible traffic?
Idaho, probably. Okay, with that, we'll move on to Community Development Director. Luke's gone, so Stuart, fill in in the night?
Luke did not leave me with anything specific to pass on to you. I'll just point out that although our agenda does say that our next meeting we'll be adjourning to is December 15th, we do not have items for that, so that meeting will actually be canceled. And just to point out that we do have the parade, Christmas parade coming up this Friday, and the ice rink is underway. And Commissioner Hagel indicated that that would be opening on the 10th. Is that correct? So lace up your skates and go give it a try. Matt, you had something on the QLMP?
Yeah, just one more update. Obviously, we're updating the QLMP. If you could go to the website and fill out the questionnaire, that would be much appreciated. If you could circulate that to family, friends, organizations. We want as many responses as we can get. It's a big green button right on the website.
Great, thank you very much. Anything else that's...
That is it.
Mr. Moreno?
Public Works. From Public Works to piggyback on Stuart's mentioning of the parade. Just so you guys are aware, at noon, Jefferson will be closed. So at noon, so it'll be quite early. Traffic will definitely be snarled around here in Old Town. And so that Jefferson corridor is going to be closed at noon. And they'll be bringing in the floats. And then at four, then it'll be a full closure. So it'll be very restricted starting at noon. And then also, we have our new parking lot on First and Front behind the roadway end, so 140 spaces or so, all striped. We have some ADA in there that was done with asphalt, so it looks really good. Pat wanted to make sure you guys were aware of that. And then lastly, the trail on the Murrieta Creek. Pat had a meeting on that. We're finalizing the license agreement with flood control, so therefore, we're hoping for an opening of that trail system along the creek by January.[1704.11]